One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the minutes of last meeting. Any more here so you can do it. Right? The rest is up to you.
I was here.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren. To approve the minutes of last meeting, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
I make a motion to approve item number five that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
And it's still 9:00.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To open the salary board at 9:00. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Salary board.
I agree.
Yes, motion to approve the minutes of June 11, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Treasury Abolic, signed by Commissioner Warren. To approve the minutes of last meeting, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
I make a motion to approve item number four that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item four on the agenda. Position of community corrections officer. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a question here. It's, uh... Does that sound...
Salary range, or...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you explain what this new position is? Community corrections officer. Reporting to the warden with a salary starting at $46,000 to $48,000. What is that position?
You're on your way, Bob. This is my claim.
Yeah, what this person's gonna do... There's so many people out on probation and out on bail that this person's gonna be able to go down there, check whether they have jobs, get them out on work release, make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do according to their probation rules. And if they violate a probation, they can revoke their bail. They go back to jail. Currently, there are just so many people on that it's hard to keep track of what everybody's doing.
And...
This position is going to be helping probation, keep track of who's out on work release, who's on probation, and they're actually doing what they're supposed to be doing.
And why is this position needed at this time? Is there much more people...
Because nobody's been keeping track. And there's been a lot of issues that have come up at the jail that have brought this to our attention. This is one of the ways to help fix it.
Now, are the numbers of people on probation and out on bail higher every year, the past several years?
Yeah.
It's been getting higher, and do you know what the reasons might be?
Yes, I don't know what the numbers are. Yeah, because more people go into jail. And there's more people, uh... More things going on, and we can't fill the jail up so a lot of them get probation. But there's conditions with probation, and those conditions, we have to make sure are being met.
And how much of a population can you have at the jail? What's the most people that can be in the jail?
It's 100?
100.
110.
100 and 200.
And is it full right now, as far as you know?
No.
And what's the name of the warden at the jail?
Currently, it's Nick Penegliero.
And how long has he been...
And there's a couple deputies. One deputy, two deputies, one left, one left, Josh Weller.
And how long has he been in? Because he had a different ward...
He's been with the county for a long time.
As far as the warden?
Uh...no, he's been a warden for... Yeah, I'm gonna say four or five years from Bill's... Don Stewart left. They go to Bradford County.
It's already four or five years since the previous one?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question?
Go ahead, Bruce.
You said there were conditions. I'm not familiar what...well, how it works in Susquehanna County. Is one of the conditions a drug test now and then?
Yes.
How often?
Whenever they feel like it. One of the benefits of probation. They don't need to say, "If you're on probation, they can come in your house and say, 'Pee in the cup.'"
And if they fail this test...
You're going to jail.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to add another motion, um...to the salary board agenda. The motion would be to increase RS Stoudt's salary by $5,000 retroactive to March 20th, when he took over an extra position. Extra duties.
As a director, right? The duties we added to him down there. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. It was retroactive to March 20th.
Yeah, we're supposed to give it to him then. Never did.
And to...
For chief clerk. He's the acting temporary chief clerk. Now he's taking on those duties.
We haven't gone through a meeting yet. Can we do that?
Ah, that's a good point.
Effective after the meeting.
Well, you can make it to the position, not to the individual. You can say it's to the position of acting...
Yeah, we'll do it to the position. That's a good point. That is the way to...yeah.
All right, and $5,000 also to the position of acting chief clerk effective June 13th. Which will go away when...
He is no longer the chief clerk.
When the acting chief clerk's position is...
Right.
I was told he was not going to get any increase.
That was my original understanding.
I never...I never heard that either.
That's what I understood when all this was being discussed. All right, so is...we have one motion, or do we have two motions?
It's all one motion.
All one motion.
No. I vote no.
Make motion, I'll second it.
Okay, motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kathy votes no.
Three yes, one no. Okay, any public comment on the salary board?
What is his other position, Mr. Stoudt?
Well, he's the public safety director, too.
Motion to close salary board, return to the commission meeting.
Second, 9:06.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number six on the commissioners' agenda. And it's still 9:06.
We're a motion number six, aren't we? We convene the commission, convene that, then mark the time.
I made that motion, and it's 9:06.
I'm the seven.
I'm seven. Michael, you seconded six, ain't ya?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven?
I'm agreeing seven.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item seven on the agenda and ratify the cash disbursements and electronic transfers. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number eight that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item eight on the agenda for the approval of the seminar request of payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number nine that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item nine on the agenda. Questions or comments? Yes.
Is this another position for Robert Stoudt? Is he also in emergency management?
We've just been talking about this for the last 10 minutes. Yes, he's the public safety director, and he's also the acting chief clerk now.
Okay, so this is...
How can he do all these jobs in an eight-hour day?
He doesn't work anymore.
Well, he doesn't work. He hasn't been working eight hours, Bruce. He was here at 7:00 yesterday morning, and then called me at 6:30 on his way back from the jail and addressing issues there at the jail. So it's not eight hours.
And no...was this job advertised? No one put in for it?
Yes, it's been advertised.
And it's still advertised, because he doesn't really want the job, and he's helping us out to do it.
But we've gotta have somebody in that role doing the work that needs to get done until we can hire somebody to do the job. So it's gonna get...actually, I've got the advertising, another advertisement to go out on it this week. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Make a motion to approve item number 10 that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item 10 on the agenda. Questions or comments?
And what's his position in the jail? Besides, it says here, jails.
It's jail.
It is just jail.
That's all you say? He doesn't have a...that's his title?
It's a personal issue. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 that's listed on your agenda.
Yes, second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item 11 on the agenda. Questions or comments?
Is liquid fuels funds, is that part of Act 13?
No. Uh, this was bid once. There was nobody...put out once. Nobody took in, um...sent any bids in on it in time, so we're trying to do it again.
So you're wanting to pave the road that's up to Upper Monument Street?
Yes.
Where the old jail is?
Yes.
Eighty...and what, near 88 Chennango Street? Because the rest of Chennango Street was paved. It was newly paved, all the way...paved all the way up there.
Well, it's the property down here that's on the county.
On the county part.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Make a motion to approve item number 12 that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item 12 on the agenda. Questions or comments? Yes.
How many other places did you go to get a price unattractive?
Uh, we went to three places, and these are state bid prices. So it doesn't have to technically go out to bid. They're part of the state bid program, Co-Stars.
Were they the cheapest in Toncanic?
Uh, Co-Stars is...they all have to use the same pricing, so...
So Lindsay, Lawn &amp; Garden would not...
They're all...they all have to use the same pricing.
Okay, let me rephrase the question. The price that you got from Lindsay, Lawn &amp; Garden, was that the same as the one you got in Toncanic?
The price from Lindsay is probably about $150 higher.
They operate a service contract on it?
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
Maintenance with them, they won't do.
Right. Bartron's serviceman is right here in South Town, so we can get service locally on him.
For how many years? Sort of like a warranty or a service contract for free, or...
Well, no, we don't sign a service contract. We service them ourselves now. Our maintenance department is capable of servicing them ourselves.
And Lindsay, Lawn &amp; Garden doesn't have a service, uh...department?
Well, we have a tire on the current tractor that has a hole in it, and they've had to ship the tire to homes to be able to get it fixed. They can't do it locally.
And they would be able to fix the hole?
They...Bartrons would take care of it here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 13 that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item 13 on the agenda. Questions or comments? Yes.
I'd like to know, where are you mowing that you need all this equipment? You're paying $32,000 almost for a John Deere. Then you're spending another almost $23,000 for a mower head. Uh, 14...what is it, 14...20...47-inch? Where are you mowing that you need all this, like, expensive equipment?
Well, first of all, the tractor's used for other things just than mowing. The tractor's also used for snow removal and other things around the county. But you also have 32 bridges that we have to use the boom mower on to take and cut all the brush back away from the guardrails so that the bridges are visible.
So this is for the whole county you're talking about?
For our 32 bridges, our three dams, all of that. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 14 that's listed on your agenda.
More sleep. Yeah.
I'll make that.
Patty Jones, don't...yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see what we're doing.
Can you say that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item 14 on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 15 that's listed on your agenda. Could we add what the repairs are? Let's see.
Yeah. Yeah, right here.
Yeah, it's to replace all the rotten wooden moldings on both buildings. We paint all areas down to the masonry line. Replace and paint the four lower panels. We place the cap on the children use side. Uh, we replaced the cap on the lower office building side. And that's the work that's gonna do.
And this is that where the board fell off?
Yep, the whole front.
It all rotten out.
Okay.
Question? Any other questions or comments?
I'll second it, I believe.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 16 that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item 16 on the agenda. Questions or comments? Yes.
Can you explain what the new health law...healthcare law is that you have to comply with?
Yeah, I guess in the VDA comply with, not compile.
I'm right.
So the words...the wrong word there, compile. Approve the amendment to the health plan for eligibility?
Right. New requirements under new Obamacare requires that it's 90 days, not six months. Our...our policy was six months. We have to change it to 90 days to comply with the new healthcare law.
And it needs to be eligibility also.
The eligibility spelled wrong, yeah?
Right. Any other questions or comments?
Yes. Um, where it says compile, do you mean comply?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's two words. There's misspelled there, and...
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Make a motion to approve item number 17 that's listed on your agenda.
Oh, boy, those coppers. Yes, second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item 17 on the agenda. Questions or comments? Yes.
So now, what is the cost of that improvement in the back of the courthouse up to now? So this is an additional cost, $8,000?
This has nothing to do with the back of the courthouse. This is the front of the courthouse.
This is the front?
Yes.
So what do you have to do?
The capitals on top of the columns are all rotted out. Need to be replaced. So they'll have to come in and, um...put scaffolding up and brace the top of the roof up to pull the columns and replace the capitals. At that time, they'll inspect the columns just to make sure they're not rotting. And if they are, they'll have to be replaced, too.
And that's $8,000 to inspect?
No, no. It's $8,000 for the engineering drawings and to do all the drawings necessary to comply with labor and industry to do the work. The work itself is expected to cost between $80,000 and $100,000.
It's more like it.
Right. And we'll...and the recommendation at that point will be that we'll use funded debt for it, to use up that. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 18.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 18 that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item 18 on the agenda. Questions or comments? Yes.
Uh, and where is that connected? It says Act 13 funds are gonna be used to purchase 30 computers for almost $40,000. And how is that an impact? I mean, you have 13 impacts. Which impact are you choosing to correlate with this per...
The Act 13 legislation has certain categories. You can Act 13 money for...one of them is for technology and GIS. And that's what we're using it for. Any other questions?
Are these to replace existing computers?
Yes.
And what are you gonna do with the old ones?
The old ones, um...if they're of any value, when they're done with them, they will take and allow them to get moved to areas that are...need less horsepower, less size machines. Uh, other ones will be stripped out. Stripped apart. Any salvageable parts, they'll keep. And anything else, then they'll take and salvage.
Okay, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 19 that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item 19 on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 20 that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Jean Greco. To approve item 20 on the agenda. Questions or comments?
And who qualifies for this transportation services?
You'd have to check with TreeHapp. TreeHapp manages this. They work within agreement with the Department of Transportation.
Is it just for elderly people or senior citizens?
No, it's elderly, it's handicapped, it's people that are impaired. They have...there's a few different categories of that. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 21.
Make a motion to approve item number 21, but I'd like to add to open for review, the RFPs.
What are you doing?
Add for review.
Well, how about if we take...because we have them.
We got any, didn't we?
We just make a motion to table it at this time.
Second.
Do you want table it at this time?
We didn't get any.
Okay. All right, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, it's tabled. Okay, item 22.
All right.
Can you explain what RFP means? Since you have initial...
Request for proposal.
So that means what, someone who's interested in buying this recycling center?
And nobody was interested.
And nobody's still interested in buying it?
No. Item 22.
Make a motion to approve item number 22 with...to open for review.
Second.
Motion, second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Open. I don't even know who they're from.
Here is All Mode Communications.
They just go on to the...
Great. I thought they would announce the price so we could figure out what it was. We're not gonna do that, but wait and see.
No, the RFP, we can't totally...I'll get through them all.
Home beds, Frontier Communications Solutions. What's that?
All Mode is out of, um...Freeville, New York.
Frontier Communications. What is this? Application for employment. Thank you. Need that. 101, it says. This is from... Project to...Gaiet Communication Industries. There's two of them. Another one to the...
On the 23. Yes.
Do you have a number in mind for this phone system?
As far as cost?
Yeah.
Um, it's probably gonna be $100,000 to $150,000, I would estimate. I don't, right now, know for sure. Because of the wiring that has to be done, what's the phone system itself. And that's what part of this proposal's about. So once the consultants go through it and they get it all sorted out and figure out what each proposal is, then we all know something.
And where's the money gonna come from? What fund for the phones?
We haven't determined yet. Either the general fund, most likely. Okay, item 23.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 23 that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
It's been accepted by Mary Evans, is that correct? Are we...do we...do we accept the resignation if it's from the public official?
Should've come from Mary Evans, yes.
Yeah, I mean, she's not sent it out, I guess.
I should say to acknowledge the...
To acknowledge.
We would normally say per the recommendation of Mary Evans. Because they're gonna tell them first, and then it comes dust act down here.
Okay, with those changes, any other questions? Yes.
And how long did Mike O'Harlust work for the Recorder of Deeds Office?
I couldn't...I don't know. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item...to add per the recommendation of, um...
Rosiano.
Michelle Rosiano.
Director, yeah.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner... Excuse me. Commissioner Jean Greco, approve item 24. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we'll have public comment.
Motion to...
Wait. Nobody else wants to comment? Oh, I'd like to ask as far as, how do we know what your duties are? Do you have anything written anywhere, what the duties of the county commissioners are? Where that we can look up, like...
County code.
County code.
County code. And what are your salaries at this time?
I don't know.
You can file right now and find out.
You don't know? You can't tell the public what the taxes are paying for?
No.
Well, how about approximately?
50. 50, around there someplace.
About 50. And then, do you get any kind of perks with that? What do you get with that? Anything else? Do you get anything else beyond the 50?
Let's see, perks. Perks, you get to come back over here in the middle of the night to do things. I get to work Saturdays and Sundays.
Do you get health insurance?
Well, of course.
And do you have to pay into it at all?
Yes.
And also, I'd like to know, how many jobs can you have besides the jobs that you have as far as county commissioners? Is there a limit? You can have any other paying jobs?
I can do as many things as I'm physically capable of doing.
And how many jobs do you have besides county commissioner?
Full-time jobs?
Full or part-time that are paying jobs?
Part-time jobs.
You have two others? So you have three jobs altogether you're doing.
Absolutely.
And Mike, how many jobs do you have besides...
I got a lot of my buddies telling me I don't really have any job. I don't really work very much.
Well, you have county...
I run a law office.
You run a law office and you're county commissioner. So you, what do you have? Two jobs? And Mary, Mary Ann, you have what? Any other jobs, paying jobs besides county commissioner?
And a mother.
Oh, that's not...
And a volunteer job, we have two, because I have about 10 or 15 of those, too.
Okay, so you have volunteer plus all of that. And as far as the hours, is there anything in the code that says you have to have morning hours or day hours for meetings?
The code says they have to have meetings, isn't it nine o'clock, right? Yeah, so it's right in the code.
Oh, it says in the code actually it has to be nine o'clock and no other time? Who set up the code?
It's got to be between certain hours.
Between, yeah, between the hours of operation of the courthouse, from my understanding.
It can be any time, yeah, any time.
Nine to 4:30.
Nine to 4:30, so you can't have evening hours so more people who are working can come to these meetings. So, because I went to a meeting, you know, in New York State a couple of weeks ago in Chamon County and they have meetings at night and they had about 70 people attend.
We tried that.
You tried that?
They tried that. They have tried that.
And how did that work out?
It did not, it did not work.
And remember, we tried going and having our meetings around the county.
That didn't work.
Going different places, and that didn't work.
And how long ago was that, you think? Like, over 10 years ago or...
Yeah, it was more than 10 years ago.
And when I went to Chamon County, they were discussing Marcellus waste, that they didn't want to take our waste because we don't have any dump sites or landfills. And they were getting our waste, so they, they had a...
Well, no, that's not true. So if you're going to put facts out, put true facts out.
So what is it?
It's not that Pennsylvania doesn't have dump sites, it's just that...
I said our waste as far as our county.
Well, again, Pennsylvania has waste sites, but again, Chamon County underbid everybody and does it a lot cheaper. That's why everybody's hauling it to Chamon County. So make sure you get the facts right.
All right, so then, I'm just saying, do we have any landfills in our county for Marcellus waste?
There are no landfills in our county, period.
Okay, so we have to send it out elsewhere. All the tons of Marcellus waste has to go other places in Pennsylvania, plus New York.
Still your point.
So my point is that they have people protesting receiving our waste because radioactive, it's high in heavy metals and it's also has different radiums in it.
But again, that's Chamon County's problem in New York State, not ours. They're the ones that made the deal.
So if they closed their border, their county border to our waste and also 12 other counties now are banning Marcellus waste from Pennsylvania, then we might have a problem getting rid of all the waste that's in Susquehanna County from the almost 1,000 gas wells that have been drilled, which operate in our county and which usually...
But there's not waste every day from the 1,000 gas wells. So again, there's only waste from active gas wells that are being actively worked on, not all 1,000 gas wells. So again, let's get the facts straight here. And there's not a huge supply of waste sitting around the county in parking lots waiting to be dumped someplace.
And I'm not saying that, so why are you saying that?
Because your implication that you're making is that we have all this huge pile of waste in Susquehanna County that we can't get rid of.
I didn't make that implication, you did.
Any other comments?
Someone else?
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, I wanted to apologize for short notice last week when I invited you to come on our field trip. Jen, I just have a little, I have a little reading material to offer to you on a study of different 44 hazardous air pollutants at gas drilling sites. Now, the field trip that we had last week here in our county was with NYU, West Virginia University, and Rutgers. And Harvard did show that they are interested in this, monitoring our air quality. And it's not all official to put together the field trip, but I wanted to share with you, because I'm sitting there in Montrose, that one of the highest places we found for pollution was here in Montrose. We were standing, we were on the street in front of the original pizza place and the monitors there for particulate matter, which is extremely hazardous and ultrafine particles, off the chart. So I think that's important for the county to realize that in-town is also reeling with the effects of the air pollution from the truck traffic that's going, you know, right, right to the town. That's just informal information. I have some reading material for you and we'll be getting back to you with more on this.
Do you know what the particulates were? Was it dust from the trucks coming through, stirring up the dust? Or hazardous particulates with, I mean, there could be hazard in the dust.
Well, it's dust and then it's also diesel, it's also the particulate matter from the exhaust and, I don't know, next room. But it was surprising because we visited on public roads various sites at different stages of development, from a site that was being put in, a well site, a site that was being tracked, at various sites. And one of the highest readings, I think this is important to know, is in-town. I also have family in Tuncanic, I'm thinking about that. You know, they're reeling with the traffic, too. You don't have a bypass. I'm just thinking, you know, as this picks up, and I think we're only one-fifth of the way into the operations for Susquehanna County, it's only going to get higher.
And I think if, remember, I told you too that it's kind of ironic that the Department of Transportation deems Susquehanna County as one of the areas that has some of the least pollution compared to other counties like Tioga and some of the other ones. And the reason I say that is because, I think it's Tioga County, and I may be wrong on that, but there's one county west of us right now that had a, got a good sizable grant to put in a natural gas filling station, grant money because the air quality in that area was so poor. But when we checked to see, well, can Susquehanna get some of that grant money for Susquehanna? The answer was, your air quality is too good.
Well, DEP emissions summary from 2006 to 2012, our particulate matter went from .5 to 1.0. Now, that's only up to 2012. That doesn't include the last two years of that activity. There isn't really any monitoring being done per se. So it's going to be interesting when the monitoring does start and I will keep you informed on what we're doing and try to include you in it. And I'll give you a little homework.
You going to get this to the borough?
Oh, well, we've been, we were just getting connected with the township over in Dimick, but yeah.
I mean, you did this in the borough. The borough needs to know because most of where this, we don't have any control of jurisdiction over any of the roads, but the borough does.
Okay.
And the borough could implement ordinances, we cannot. So this...
They can control the traffic. They have the right to control.
Yeah, they should. The borough should be, should have some of this stuff as well.
Yeah, that's, thank you for the information. I think even just thinking about routes, truck routes, the people that are getting, you know, hit the hardest, maybe, you know, divided it up, share the pain. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to respond to the comment you made about the county west of us. If you're referring to Bradford County, they, they are well ahead of us with established wells pumping gas and the particulates into the air. We're on our way, but I'm sure we'll catch up to them.
Yeah, and I don't think it was Bradford. I think, I, boy, I'm thinking Tioga or Sullivan. I'm not positive. I'm going to have to find out.
When you look at that newspaper, The Driller, that comes out every month, and The Independent, part of The Independent, the first one, the first section is about Bradford County and they are far and away the most heavily drilled county.
Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, I'd like to also mention that the July 4th parade, the theme for this year is Bill of Rights, Constitution, respect for the land, land of the free. And last, that's their, that's their theme for this year. And then last year, we were denied, the theme was helping your neighbor. So our private water truck that brings water to several families in Dimick, Franklin Township that lost their water because of gas drilling when it came into their neighborhoods, we were denied to be in the parade by Larry Kelly. And he said that he didn't think that we should be in there because we present a negative message about gas drilling because we're showing that there's damages here, damages to our water, which is now in seven sections of our county.
Your point.
So my point is, maybe you could do something to help us get into the parade this year and convince the Kiwanis, the Lions Club, any of them... Well, you could have, speak a good word and say, can we get in there? And then this way, we're the land of the free and have rights.
Vera, I'll address the chair, but to Vera's answer to her question, query, she's mistaken in the idea that there is something called freedom of speech and assembly that is being promulgated. It's actually prohibition of the freedom of speech and the denial of the right to assembly. You have to remember that. It has nothing to do with any freedom.
Thank you, Edna.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
9:35.
Is checkstone for me?
No, I'm done. And I have to leave.
I'll bring my...
What happened to school?
Her daughter's going out of town and I don't think she might be...